...her rational vision beyond prohibition. We can't just end it and hope to put it back together. It's irrational. The sponsor has studied other states, setting up standards for dosing, which is very important, and packaging, and requiring third-party testing. Ethan's setting up standards for concentrate extraction so it can be done safely. And we could say she's made pot as boring as it can get. The Department of Justice has laid out eight clear guidelines for states regarding marijuana laws. They largely focus on preventing diversion, whether it be diverting the product to children and states where it's illegal, or whether it be diverting proceeds and profits to the drug cartels. We can probably all agree that Congress has stepped in on some of the issues, and that they're lovely if they can even make a change. However, real progress is being made daily to move the entire country toward an end to the failed war on drugs. This bill sets Maine up to prevent students from being denied access to college or job opportunities, makes the air out of the balloon regarding racial disparity of the application of law, and sets us on a trajectory toward responsible regulation. The fact that the bill uses tax revenue to build schools instead of prisons is just an added bonus. And just two or three weeks ago, I attended a national conference of state legislative workshop in Denver, Colorado. First time I've been to Colorado since the legalization. And I saw it firsthand. I talked to a lawyer who was a high school friend of mine, and asked her about it, and I visited dispensary to see what the atmosphere was like and what the requirements were. And I saw instead of some tune-ups that we mentioned being needed, I did see a healthy, safe system that generates great revenue and has very little visible opposition in the state. The tax revenue in Denver collected from sales between the city tax and the state tax is 21 percent. And there will be those who suggest it's irresponsible to legalize tax and regulate marijuana for adult use, and I respectfully disagree with that assertion. But the real issue is the vast majority of Mainers disagree with it. We have a chance to get ahead of the issue, provide a thoughtful deliberative approach to ending prohibition, and still leave the question of whether to legalize it or not up to the people of Maine. Vote is coming, and as of next year, our hands are put on it. It's no coincidence that this bill has so many lawmakers submitting testimony. We all see the writing on the wall. I urge the committee to vote. It ought to pass on LD-1380. Happy to answer any questions.
Representative, what percent of junior high students, grades seven and eight, do you believe experiment with marijuana?
I don't know.
In your history of legalizing this and everything, is nothing in your background that would indicate that that could be an issue?
Well, I'm an architect, but I'm not a teacher, but of course, it could be an issue, but there's nothing about architecture that would warrant that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
If you have any other questions, you can keep discussing.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Members of the Congress, I'm proud to thank you. My name is Lydia Blue. I represent coastal New York, the southern Maine. I stand here in support of LD-1380, one of the words my support for this, an act to legalize tax and regulate marijuana. It's especially important to members of my constituency in southern Maine because if it is legal in Maine, it will be a big draw to the southern part of the state and the rest of Maine and the south. So good regulation is going to be very important in managing legal marijuana in Maine, especially for my part of the state. To voice the support, I'm going to use the voice of my constituent, Victoria Seifman, and read her testimony. I think that does a good job of why this should be supported. Victoria Seifman says, "Marijuana is argued less addictive than alcohol and considered to be impossible to overdose on. Similarly, marijuana prohibition has not decreased recreational use and has ultimately done more harm than good. The war on drugs has directly resulted in violent organized crime on a global scale with thousands of young, nonviolent drug users behind bars, and it has drained resources and diverted our nation's attention from prevention and treatment of addiction. From my professional experience as a social worker for over 30 years, I would advise the committee to not conclude erroneously that recreational use of marijuana results in addiction. Addiction is a disease. Some folks are at risk for addiction, like others are at risk for diabetes or heart disease. We can identify those risk factors for addiction that should offer counseling and education and provide tools that will help people make informed choices, as they would be presented with any genetically determined health risks. Addicts should have access to treatment for as long as they need it. If we are serious about the harm caused by drug addiction, the sensible and practical solution is to relocate the money we currently spend on the war on drugs into addiction prevention and treatment. If such treatment had been available on the scale he needed, my stepson may be alive today. He was an alcoholic who died at age 27 in a tragic car crash. Alcohol in the system." Her own experience, Victoria Seifman's experience with marijuana was that it was fun, it was social, it was mellow, it enhanced the experience of music, art, conversation. She was never at risk of becoming an addict, neither were her children. They used alcohol and marijuana at points in their lives without developing addictive or abusive behavior among our happy, successful adults. Let's reform our marijuana policies, regulate its tax, and use the funds for education and treatment. Let's take marijuana out of the hands of the drug cartels and allow it to be promoted with all the proper rules and regulations that will make it safe. Thank you for allowing me to read my constituents' testimony.
Thank you. Any questions for Representative Blue? Sitting up. Thank you. Lieutenant Scott, if you want to come up, please.
Representative Rose, representing the founding members of the Joint State Committee on Public Safety. My name is Lieutenant Ryan Scott, and I'm the commanding officer of the State Police Traffic Safety Unit. I'm here today to testify on behalf of the Maine Department of Public Safety and the Opposition to LD-1380. Do you have to do it at your permission, 1401, at the same time the testimony could be filed?
Yes, please.
And LD-1401, an act to allow and regulate teen adult abuse on campus. Alcohol-related fatal crashes resulted in about 28 percent of Maine's highway fatalities or about 40 deaths last year. That number is way down compared to the DUI-related fatal crashes of 20 years ago. This resulted from years and years of public detention and risks associated with drunk driving, including the efforts of law enforcement, highway safety officers, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, private organizations like AAA, and other groups like Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, and private individuals who have taken a stand towards the changing of a culture. It is not acceptable in our society to drink and drive alone. When those who remain in the minority choose to drink and drive, there are consequences for their conduct if they are stopped by a police officer, since there are national standards and national training standards for all full-time law enforcement officers. There's a national standard, point zero, with blood alcohol content to help with the problem. Yet according to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, 1 in 9 people who are involved in a fatal crash will test positive for marijuana. From 1999 to 2010, the rate of those killed in fatal crashes who tested positive for marijuana has tripled based on results from a six-state study that produced 23,591 deceased drivers. Unlike alcohol, marijuana intoxication is not, never is, easy to detect. There is no national per se standard like there is with alcohol. There's no standard entry-level training for law enforcement officers, and very few officers are trained to the level of a drug recognition expert, which is required for these complex cases. To try and tackle the problem of those driving under influence on marijuana, if you like, starting the battle with probably why alcohol all over again, and ask how many lives would be lost during the meantime? Give me an idea of the drug recognition experts. The State Police has a little bit over, about 300 school members currently employed. We have had three drug recognition experts last year who put on a class, and doubled our numbers. We're now up to six in the entire state. Very low numbers. LD-1380 and 1401 would legalize recreational use of marijuana for those 21 or over 20, make the commercialization of marijuana legal, and would also legalize dispensaries for the drug. We only have to look at the state of Colorado to understand that these ideas constitute bad policy. I want to share with some information with you from a Colorado study. I passed out an executive summary, or had passed out with the executive summary. This is 160 or so-page study, and I thought that'd break way too much for everybody sitting at this table. And so I can leave a copy with the analysts as I make reference to it, but there's like a two-page executive summary that goes over some of the highlights that I've just included for you to take a look at. And I attended a conference earlier this year in the state of Colorado on the impacts of legalization and commercialization of marijuana. At the conference I went to in Colorado, I've seen a 100% increase in traffic fatalities involving an operator who tested positive for marijuana. That's from 2007 to 2012. I was not surprised to hear the statistic. However, I did not expect to hear about some of the other horrible consequences of legalizing the drug. These consequences include, but are not limited to, the following. The majority of what I'm going to reference as DUID, because that is what Colorado uses, that striving at the influence of drugs. The majority of DUID arrests involve marijuana, and 25 to 40 percent of those were from marijuana alone. Toxicology reports with a positive marijuana result for DUID have increased 16 percent in Colorado from 2011 to 2013. In 2013, children aged from 12 to 17 who used marijuana in the last month was 11.6 percent. Yet the national average was 7.15 percent. Colorado ranked third in the nation for current marijuana usage of 56.8 percent for O.A., higher than the national average. In just one year after legalization, those aged 12 to 17 who used marijuana in the last month has increased to 6.6 percent. Drug-related suspensions from schools has increased by 34 percent since the commercialization of medical marijuana in 2009. During the same period of time, alcohol-related suspensions have increased. Those 12 to 17 years of age on probation that had tested positive for THC has increased by 20 percent since the legalization. Among adults aged 18 to 25, use of marijuana has increased 11 percent since legalization. This figure is 53.62 percent higher than the national average. Among adults over age 26, the use of marijuana has increased by 27 percent since legalization. This figure is 85.7 percent higher than the national average. Marijuana-related emergency department visits have increased by 57 percent. Hospitalizations related to marijuana have increased 82 percent from 2008 to 2013. Marijuana ingestion by children under age 12 has increased by at least 50 percent. Calls to the Rocky Mountain Poison and Drugs Center related to marijuana exposure have increased by over 70 percent. Exposure for children zero to five increased from 15 in 2012 to 38 in 2013. The number of THC-infused edible exposure calls increased by 400 percent. Marijuana diversion in other states is on the rise. From 2013 to 2014, there was a 25 percent increase in the number of interdiction seizures. THC concentration labs explosion rose from zero in 2012, 12 in 2013, and 32 in 2014, the year that it became legal. And when I say the year that it became, the first licensed facility for recreation was in January 2014, April 2012, they licensed three facilities until 2014 for recreation. Marijuana public consumption complaints have increased by 79 percent. Alcohol consumption measured in gallons consumed has also increased by 4 percent during the same period of time. I want to mention that these dispensaries are popping up everywhere. There are 505 medical marijuana centers and 322 marijuana stores, or 827 told. Compare that to, there's 405 Starbucks and 227 McDonald's, which is 632 told, so compare those two numbers. There are 827 medical facilities and 632 Starbucks and McDonald's combined, so the dispensaries are outnumbering those, yet the first McDonald's in Colorado opened in the 1960s. There are also examples of tragic deaths related to marijuana use in Colorado. In 2014, a 19-year-old boy jumped to his death after eating a marijuana infused cookie. Also in 2014, a man killed his wife after eating a marijuana adder. I talked to a Colorado police officer who related to me that ever since the legalization occurred, law enforcement has constantly struggled to keep up with unintended, often disastrous consequences of legalization. So let us learn from Colorado and spend time considering the effects of legalization here, which is still to the infancy before going down the road of legalization. For these reasons, I urge you to vote off not to pass on LD-1380 and LD-1401 on behalf of the Department of Public Safety and the Maine State Police. And thank you for your time. I'm happy to try and get certain questions answered.
Thank you, Lieutenant Scott. Representative Decker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another question returned. Your organization.
Our problems over here.
The representative. Start over. Thank you, Madam Chair. I presented this conference in Colorado, and the executive summary you presented here on the Rocky Mountain High Intensity Road Traffic Area. Do you know anything about this organization, or what its purpose was, or where it fit into the whole debate on marijuana in Colorado?
Actually, I don't, and that's a great question. I don't know its history. I know that what I referenced was Volume Two, and there is a Volume Three that's available. I recognize it to be a governmental entity that has some oversight. What I understand, and looking at the summary in front of this, it said the whole idea is to take a look at the impact of the legalization of marijuana from a perspective of skate ability, be all-inclusive, and look at things such as DUI, but also to take a look at what has happened forerally around folks that are in emergency rooms or unintended consequences of marijuana-infused products, and how the, even though it's being regulated, it is still in the hands, in minors, in the hands of young children, and that there's been a lot of unintended consequences. So the idea behind this organization in the summary, just to be able to report to other states so they can learn what's happening in their state, potentially use their results, if you will, as kind of a rulebook, or a benchmark, or a guidance, saying these are the problems that we're dealing with right now. Be aware of them before, of the actual inception of all of this. Okay? Thank you.
Representative Decker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the summary, you was talking about the students and the schools in Colorado, drug-related expulsion and everything else. Did they also include in that study how their performance was in the schools? I think that's important because I realize a kid under the influence, something they grade youth who suffer, and I just want to know how that was. Representative Decker, I did look through all 166 pages, but I would be entirely honest if I said I couldn't write it all. I don't recall seeing anything about performance levels in school. I don't remember seeing how things dealing with this expulsion was.
Thank you. Maybe we can get those results for the word session. My friend is smart. Thanks. It was great.
Representative Decker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Lieutenant Scott, for being here. I have two questions, just for my own verification. I think earlier in session, I believe I heard that currently, if a trisha stops someone on the turnpike, we, Maine doesn't have the ability right now to do a test for same marijuana. So I know Russell and her child, she has a drug fatality bill, and I believe I heard next year we'll have the resources to do that. Is that the case?
Representative Decker, what I know about that, what I believe about that is you are 100 percent correct. We don't have the ability to do blood drug testing. We can do urine analysis, but that's based, that's the testing tablets. And that's, in our experience, not a good indicator of impairment, and it doesn't give you a level or a concentration of whole blood. So when we talk about DUI or stopping somebody that's under the influence, yeah, we do lack the tools right now to deal with things other than alcohol. All police officers are trained to national standards because there is a national standard for alcohol. Standardized field sobriety testing is national per se level. There is no national training for entry-level police officers, and there is no national standard for per se levels that they do are over a certain nanogram per milliliter of THC in whole blood that you would presume to be under influence. Some jurisdictions do have those laws. I think there are 16 that had a per se level that reached from zero to, I think, maybe one state was 25 nanograms, other states are 5 nanograms.
Thank you.
Well, I do have a second question. I'm just not sure if it's for you, or I don't know if trucks are a McKinney's here, but I'll just give it a shot. One of the things I'm thinking about hearing all this testimony, and one of the representatives mentioned, drug testing in the workforce. I know down in Meyer, we have some big industry, craft-worthy aircraft, Harry Portsmouth Shipyard. I know that they drug test. So I don't know how legalizing this is going to impact that. I guess that's a big thought of mine, and I don't know if that's a direct McKinney question, or if you had any opinion.
Representative Decker, I think you're right. That probably is more of a direct McKinney question. And when we start talking about what's done in the private industry compared to what's regulated by the government, there's differences. It could be, it could be something that's legal, like alcoholism, it can be regulated by the legislature policies, but I don't know these houses, who would dare to delve into it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Sitting up. Thank you.
Representative Decker.
I think we're ready for the call of mail. We're going to do one through 14. And number one, Paul. Come on up. It's a box. We are going to start the three-minute timer now because we have 60 some people.
Thank you very much for taking the time to consider this. I have my written testimony. I represent legalized Maine. We were one of the groups looking to put the legalization measure on ballot in 2016. I just want to kind of go over these points and talk about policy. I think everyone's kind of touched on kind of the social justice aspect and like looking at the impacts, but when we're looking at setting an appropriate agency to oversee marijuana, marijuana is a plant, and if we're going to be asking the Bureau of Babylon to oversee it, we're going to ask people who deal with liquor and water to regulate the plant. In both bills, I believe it also says that Babylon would then determine what pesticides would be allowed to be used on this illegal marijuana. I very strongly think that because marijuana is a plant, if the committee decides to go forward, they should choose a committee of jurisdiction to be agriculture committee, and if they're going to have that commission, if they're going to be having different departments kind of coalescing or overlapping when it comes down to dealing with legal marijuana, when it comes down to cultivation, then I think agriculture is the best one. When we're talking about the tax rate, we all know that there is already untaxed marijuana being sold in the underground market, so any tax rate that we set has to be realistic. Our initiative says 10 percent. I think 10 percent is fair, but if we set it too high, you can see what happens in Washington and Colorado, is that there's a strong, gigantic amount of marijuana that's being bought in the underground market because it's people taking the path of least resistance. They want to be, they want to save $5 or $10, so they get it off the street dealer as opposed to getting it from a licensed store. That kind of links down to when we're talking about the number of retail stores. As much as it's nice to have the idea that there being a slow rollout, marijuana is already out there. Marijuana is already here in our communities. It's already being sold. It's there. We all know it. So if you limit the number of retail stores, what is going to happen is that you're going to take the path of least resistance. If, I live in, I live in Knox, Maine. If I live in Knox, Maine, and there's only one retail store, I'm either in Waterville, Bangor, or Belfast, I'm facing an hour and a half minimum ground trip to go buy marijuana from a legal source. Now, will I take that hour and a half plus paying the premium price to do that round trip, or will I call it, call my local dealer who I've been getting off for the last couple of years, and get it from them? I mean, these are questions we have to ask ourselves. We strongly believe that each municipality should be able to decide the number of retail stores that, if they're going to have retail stores within their community. What is good for Portland might not be good for Milwaukee. What is good for South Portland might not be good for Knox. And so each municipality, I think, is going to know what is best for their community when it comes down to deciding whether marijuana is going to be produced, manufactured, or sold. When we're looking at the state setting the number of retail stores, how will that be decided? If the state sets the number of 20 retail stores, how are we going to divide that up throughout the state? Are we going to divide it up through health districts? Are we going to determine whether they are based off population? Again, it comes down to the fact that people are going to get marijuana through the path of least resistance and where it's affordable. So if you overtax it and you don't allow legal points of access, you're going to run into the problem of people are going to continue to go to the underground market. And that leads me to what, leads me to what we're talking about enforcement. I'm a lobbyist. We all deal with lobbyists every day. If we limit the number of retail stores to a strict low number and have a quote-unquote "slow rollout," I can assure you that after the first year, these legislators are going to come, these lobbyists are going to come forward and say, "We need you to spend more money on enforcement on the underground market because we are not getting the amount we expected for our bottom line, and more people are going to the underground market." So when we're coming really down to enforcement, the issue is that if we don't have good enough access, then we're still going to have an enforcement issue. And finally, I think it's really important that any rules should become major substantive because as we roll out this program, it's most important that you, as a committee and legislators, will be able to have control over what the rules are, and these rules are going to be enforced as law. And so therefore, I believe that any rules that are going to be enforced as law over this program should be decided by the legislature and not by an appointed person from the executive branch. In closing, when we're talking about the limit of personal cultivation numbers, I think we should make it simple for law enforcement. I think we should make it the same number as they have in the medical marijuana programs, six flowering plants, whole vegetated plants, two and a half ounces of finished product. These are going to be asking law enforcement to go and say, "Is this person a medical patient? Is this person not a medical patient? Are they allowed to have six plants? Are they allowed to have six flowering plants?" And then finally, I think that when we're talking about regulations, we have had the most regulations on marijuana for the past 40 years. It's called the drug war. It didn't work. We need to make, we need to make good policy, and we need to make a full measure, not a half-measure when we're going forward. Thank you, and I have to answer any questions.
Representative Decker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got a couple of questions for your call. First of all, what does it cost to grow an ounce of marijuana?
I think it depends. The larger, it's almost an economy of scale, it can cost anywhere, I think, from around $50 an ounce upwards, to some people, it's costing them 100-plus.
Okay. The reason I'm saying this is, if we're going to have farmers who are on this, who are licensed, does the price still going to be so high that it's going to be cheaper to buy out of black?
I think a lot of that has to do with regulations, and a lot of it has to do with the taxes. You know, if you're going to be taxing it, 15 percent, Representative Russell's plan suggests 15 percent from the grower to the retail store, the retail store, the consumer 10 percent, that's a 25 percent increase. I think that's a substantial amount where people are going to say, "I want to save the $5 or $10 on the eighth and go to the underground market."
So you have more questions? Thank you.
I just have one part about the tax revenue real quick. Our citizens initiative went through the full bidding process, reflecting signatures. At 10 percent tax, they estimated that for fiscal year 16, 17, that the tax revenue would be $3,887,400. And so that's already came from the Office of Fiscal Policy Review, but I thought that would be a number, and I will be in the halls. Thank you very much.
We're sure doing it. We need to do it. We need to do it next. Number two. Representative Decker.
Am I in order or out of order?
Number two.
Okay. I'm, my name is Senator Rosen, Representative of the House, this is the committee. My name is Jerome Collins, and I'm a resident of the Department of Labor. I'm a retired psychiatrist, and I am speaking as a private citizen. I'm not speaking for any organization other than a few friends who are supporting me in this. I oppose LD-1380 based on my experiences of treating psychiatrists and administrator of drug and alcohol programs going back to the 1960s. Marijuana is a central nervous system depressant for everybody who uses it, with an impact on all central nervous system functions. In vulnerable persons, it can have devastating acute and chronic effects, including visibility and death in the form of suicide. My clinical experience with patients harmed by marijuana was when I was the chief of psychiatry at Southern Maine Medical Center, and also when I ran a drug unit in the greater Lynnville Medical Health Center. Let me describe just a few brief clinical vignettes of situations, many, many more of which I could add to this list, but just to give you a feeling. First of all, there is, all names have been changed, so these are First of all, there is, all names have been changed, so these are not, I'm going to embarrass anybody, but from quite a while ago. The first one is acute psychotic reactions. When a certain number of recreational users will have an acute psychotic reaction. Let me talk about Susan, who was a young woman in her twenties, who was brought to the hospital for psychiatric admission by her parents when they found her in acute psychotic state. She was a heavy marijuana user since college. When we first saw her, she was terrified, crying out continuously, partially incoherent, screaming, they're going to get me. As time went on, she was alternatively trying to commit suicide, determined, in a very determined way, and needed round-the-clock nursing supervision. She was paranoid, minimally responsive to medication, and was hospitalized for over one month in a psychiatric unit. She made a clinical recovery, but showed marked timidness and loss of confidence. She, since that time, she made one experimental attempt to go back on marijuana, was terrified by the recurrence of symptoms and stopped using. And she's been symptom-free in the many years since then. She's married and has children. I also want to talk about, there are also chronic psychotic reactions. These are people who remain psychotic in one form or another, and who are vocationally disabled as a result of that, who are unable to work. I won't go into the story. You can read it for yourself, as I see the clock as moving quickly. There is also psychiatric disability, where people are unable to work as a result of the original illness that continues on. Yes, the final thing is that in my time in the county of Bunkford, every single case of suicide that I knew of with somebody who had been involved in marijuana, I'm looking at in my practice, something like 15 suicides of young people in a prime of life. I also want to say a word about the research aspect. This is not, the research is not new. The best research in the world is being done by the National Institute of Health. They've been at it since the 1960s. They have an enormous amount of data. They have an outside program. There's no need to do research here in Maine. The other questions I have, my, my second page here, are product uniformity and labeling. There's a lot of talk about tall plants, small plants, female plants, and all this other kind of stuff. You need to know the strength and purity of what you're selling. What's the product, just the same kind of product labeling that you would have on any kind of alcohol or any adulterants, additives, are there other additives that are added to make it a little more exciting? And if you were licensed, would there, shouldn't there be quality assurance for the public? Shouldn't the product be labeled as far as strength, warnings about side effects? What about women who are pregnant and nursing? Those are big, big issues. And also too, the one thing people talk about marijuana as being just like a drink after work. The drink after work does not remain in your body for two to four weeks. Marijuana psychoactive cannabinoids remain in your body for two to four weeks after you've abused it. And that's, you can take, by testing, you can show this by testing. It may impair fine motor activity, such as driving, working on machines. And wouldn't the state need to verify that the context of ours is advertised? The other point, one final point I got many, is product liability. If General Motors were to sell a car that only X percent would explode on a hybrid, would you say, well, those are brakes? Shouldn't there be some provision for product liability? Shouldn't there be some form of insurance that the people who are selling the product are covered with insurance so that the state is not left holding back?
Thank you. We don't have any time for questions, but thank you for your testimony. And number two is, is it David Comans? Is he here, David?
Observer.
Observer, okay. Number three is Dr.
Nice to meet you, Senator Rosen, and Representative Powell, I'm the committee. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. I'm speaking on behalf of both of the legislative statutes, 1380 and 1401. I'm a family physician in Maine for the last 25 years. I'm a faculty at Maine Department of Medical Medicine Residence here in Augusta. I've been the director of integrated medicine there for many years. My expertise is really in clinical medicine, nutrition, capsule, and motivational changes for positive lifestyle changes of people. I had been certified Maine residence for medical use of marijuana since 1999 when the first legislation was passed. Today, I have certified for five registered doctors. At previous levels of experience, I shared the benefits of medical marijuana for treatment of chronic disease, and now my experience for this use for many patients. Today's the special focuses on the use of marijuana for recreation as well as medical patients. Should marijuana be legalized? Is it safe? What is the logic even to restrict substance? Marijuana is more safe than it is not. In the realm of musical substances, one cannot overdose from marijuana. That means that one cannot stop the respiratory drive or stop the heart beating. There are no receptors for marijuana in the brain stem, the center of respiratory drive, or receptors in cardiac muscle. Unlike heroin or cocaine, and even alcohol, which can cause all of these things, overdose from marijuana cannot occur physiologically. On the other hand, one can be under the influence of marijuana and drop the heart to the tree and cause harm. According to the DEA classification of pharmaceuticals and street drugs, a class one drug like cocaine and heroin and marijuana should supposedly have no medical value, or at least the harm outweighs the risk. With regard to marijuana, there are numerous benefits to marijuana medically, unlike its class comrades, heroin and cocaine. I would suggest that the moral conviction, a lack of knowledge, and a fear has kept it improperly in this category. The traditional understanding of the gateway theory is no longer the norm, and frankly, does not base on evidence. Today, we know the effects of adverse childhood events is a better predictor of future substance abuse. The scholarly work of Manarima, who's a clinical psychologist at the University of California, has argued the role of marijuana in the science of harm reduction. We've learned from years of alcohol prohibition that restricted use of alcohol...